Great job. I'm worried about one twenty-seven.
Well, right, that, but that felt pretty good. It's just, it's the dirt.
He just came by my house, I think he was.
Yeah, well, they're out there loading now. They had two trucks out there loading right now.
Yeah, he's standing on the sidewalk, but I haven't seen the state go by yet, so.
Yeah. Welcome to the meeting, Monday, December sixteenth. And we're gonna start going and we're gonna stand up for the, uh, pleasure of the.
A pleasure of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. Normandy Blake's like person, Marlo Herick's like person, Dave is out tonight with a bad cold, so you got us two checks, we're gonna figure out how to make this happen.
That's right.
And, um, yeah, that's what we're doing and we, um, let's see, meeting rules, procedures, as Dave would always say, it's like the classroom style. I don't think we really have to worry about that right now.
I did not put, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, I did not put Gordon Welch on as an appointment, but he's here to speak to you about something and I thought maybe you'd want to talk to him under appointments.
Sure, yeah.
When you get to that, so I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Yep, fair enough, no, that's fine. Um, any announcements? Besides that one.
As you know, next week is Christmas. Um, we will be open, um, our normal hours next week, the town office. Uh, the clerk will be open on Monday, uh, and not Wednesday, Christmas Day. We'll be open Monday and Friday, and the same for the following week, which is New Year's.
So Monday and Friday, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, um, yeah, appointments. Come on down.
You want me to sit, stand, lay down?
Yeah. You sit right there.
Let me give you something first.
Oh, goody.
Oh, yeah.
Making dollars?
Yeah, right.
Are we praying already?
They did not win the Powerball.
Oh, come on.
They gave me, they gave me a chance to buy a ticket again. So if you don't win, they just say, okay, you can buy a ticket again. You can have that. And that. And you can have that.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you what this is about. Uh, Steve already knows, the police chief already knows what's going on. He's got his, he's got his ear to the ground. There's a group of kids that live in Maine. They, uh, belong to a organization called Trekkers. Puckers and Trekkers, whatever they call it.
Trekkers sounds good.
Yeah. It's an establishment that started thirty years ago. Actually, it started before that, but they, they knew, they're under their name now as of for thirty years, and they are looking to, they would like to know if they could borrow the floor at the town hall.
Well, so they're gonna leave it at town hall?
They're gonna sleep here. They have a program, the seniors in this group have a program, there's two groups that go out. They start this thing in seventh grade as kids, uh, growing up within the Rockland area. And they are mentored by the seniors in, in the town. And by the time they get further, further up the, they, they go in school, the further up they go and doing what they wanna do. The seniors this year have two, two programs that they're going out on. They have a bus that they would come here in. They're gonna do, uh, community project in Manchester. They wanna go through the State House, and then they're going up north. It's either gonna be at the Ice Castle or they're going to a ski area and tube. And they come with their own food, they come with their own clothes, they come with their own sleeping bags, they're just looking for a warm hard floor to sleep on in a kitchen to do their cooking.
Well, that's nice.
And I asked Steve, I, I, I asked Emmett and I, I got some push up, pushback for whatever reason. It doesn't bother me. The kids already told me, if we have a shower, fine. If we don't have a shower, fine. You know, we can stand in the toilet and flush it twice, that's all.
Well, that's good to know, that. It's like the old days, you didn't have showers all the time either, so.
No, no.
Well, that's kind of, how did they pick Webster?
Stephanie, my youngest, uh, moved into that area three years ago.
In Rockland?
And, and up in Maine.
Yeah.
And she had run programs like this down in Tennessee.
Yeah.
And then she went into politics and she left politics with a bad taste in her mouth, but, uh, she was deputy mayor of Knoxville, Tennessee.
Really? Wow.
For four years, she did that and she left running with her hair on fire.
Nice.
Her boyfriend, uh, he doesn't wanna be her boyfriend, he wants to be her husband, but she keeps saying no, so he's sticking around. He born and bred in Tennessee and he lives in Maine and you would think he'd, he would spend his whole life up there. Stephanie is the, uh, chief cook and bottle washer for this organization. She is the CEO of what goes on. And she told the kids, if you're going to New Hampshire, I will see if my dad can find a place for you guys to put your head down. So, here I am.
Yeah, so it would be two nights?
Three nights.
Three nights.
It's gonna be a Friday night, a Saturday night, and a Sunday night because it's on Martin Luther King's birthday weekend.
Okay.
So it's a three-day holiday for the kids.
Okay.
So they'll be down here late Friday night and they'll be leaving midday Sunday.
Okay, and they have chaperones?
They have, I think they're gonna have five chaperones, actually six, because Stephanie is gonna be one of them.
Does it say how many, uh, there will be seventeen people?
Seventeen people in all.
With the chaperones?
With, uh, no, seventeen people in all. It's gonna be the seniors plus the chaperones.
Yeah, now the seniors, they are just senior?
Senior in high school.
Oh, a senior in high school, okay, seniors in high school, and then, and then the chaperones.
Yep.
Yeah.
One of their, one of their mainstays that they, they try very hard, and they do, it's, you have to keep a passing grade to stay in this program.
Yeah.
And most of the kids that graduate their senior year come back for the next year or the summer months when they're out of college. They come back and they mentor the kids that are in seventh grade all the way up through to high school.
How neat. But there will just be, it'll just be seniors, it's not, it's not any other?
It's not a mixture, it's just be the, the senior, senior group with their chaperones.
Yeah. And so they come here and one year, well, Webster Elementary used to take the kids overnight in the fourth grade to the Science Center.
Yep.
And I was lucky enough to chaperone. I think I had more fun than the kids. I had live entertainment, which is Brenda Silver and her friend. Uh, but anyways, long story short, we slept on the floor with our bags and our, and I think that that, I, it's too bad they still don't do that, cause I think that was the most wonderful, uh, experience uh, for all of us.
Yep.
And, and I, I think this is cool. It gets people out, look, you know, seeing what else is out there. Probably not with a lot of money, you know what I mean? And, and, um, so I have a question, if, if we said, all right, we'll let them here, is there any reason why you couldn't, out of the three days, they pick a day to go up and shower up to the safety building?
That'd be good. Absolutely no problem at all.
Yeah, so that's what I, I, that's what, that's what I would suggest. It, this kinda makes sense, cause nobody's up here, I mean, I don't know how, you know, with the whole kitchen thing downstairs and all that. But I see this being a little bit more of a, probably a pretty cool place to kinda hang out at night, right here.
Been here with the kids from across the street.
Yeah.
And four-eight groups that have spent the night here.
Yeah, yeah.
As a pajama party.
Yeah.
And you were right.
Yeah.
I had more fun than they did.
That's right. So I personally have no problem. I would like to, I'm a, I'm a person that if somebody wants to shower, I really believe in them, so.
We've already, I talked to Stephanie about it and I said, we'll, we'll work a program out where I've got two bathrooms in my house and, and I've got other people, not a problem. They'll, they'll get showers.
So, so, and I, I guess, do you mean?
I'll come, I, it won't bother me to come in. I mean, there's gonna be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they want Saturday, come in, I'll come down over and, uh, we'll open up and they can get in there.
I will, I don't know what their agenda is, what time it'll start, what time it'll stop, but I'll let Steve know what's going on and, uh, you know, I gotta talk, Stephanie's gonna call me in the morning, uh, because she's got some other things that she wants dad to do. And, uh, and I'll let you know before it happens. It's four hours to her house and it doesn't bother her at all to call on a Friday night and say, Dad, do you think you can come up tomorrow? Mark and I are doing some wiring. Yeah, I'll be leaving the house at four-thirty in the morning, I'll be there.
Do you and I are looking to be adopted? But no, that, I think that sounds absolutely wonderful and if you can work something out so the kids could shower and, gosh, I'm not afraid to say, hey, if I need to help out, I think, I think that is, I think our young, I, I think this is great. I think it's wonderful.
I do too, so I think it's nice to have kids traveling around, seeing all the rest of the country.
Yeah, that's right, well, it's just.
Well, they, they are very excited about coming down because they, most of them are, they're kids in Maine. They have been on trips before. They, the bus, they have two big buses, regular school buses, but they're, they have been out to Arizona with the school buses.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, and they pack the buses and, you know.
And that's good, because it's nice to see the kids seeing other parts of the country.
Well, Stephanie said, don't worry about showering, Dad, because these kids have gone across country. And, you know, okay, I don't wanna ride in the bus, thank you.
Yeah, all right, so is there anything?
I noticed that, um, insurance is mentioned.
Yep, they have five hundred thousand dollar policy on their program.
We can work that out, but that's always a.
A funding, yeah. Yeah, liability, we, yeah, we don't wanna be sued doing this.
Well, I, I told Stephanie, I said, if, if you guys, there's, you, you know the town. She, she knows the town, but the rest of the people don't. I said, I've got a sleeping bag and she said, no, ain't gonna work that. You have to be part of our program to stay with the kids.
Yeah.
But, okay. She said, it's, you know, I, I know you and, and that's not a problem, but it's in our guidelines that you, nobody from outside our program will stay with the kids.
And that's good, you know, that's a sa, that's really safety precaution in this day and age.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you can't trust everybody.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I saw two kids walking the other day home from school. And I know that they were both from the far end of Boswelline up towards, uh, Merrimack County Farm, and they were in the center of Boswelline walking home. And I knew one of them and I stopped and I said, you need a ride? He goes, no, we missed the bus, so we're walking. I said, get in. Nope. Says, if I get in your vehicle and go home and my dad finds out, he's gonna blow a cork. I said, well, I know your dad, so don't worry about it. And he goes, no, 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 he says, I missed the bus. Our responsibility is to be on the bus.
Wow.
We didn't make the bus, we're walking.
Okay. We all have stories about walking home, don't we?
Yeah, okay.
Spock, he didn't come in tonight?
He's sick. He's coming in tomorrow.
Thirteen Centennial Drive.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you for telling us about that. Little PR is always nice.
They may find it work someday. They're gonna look for a project to do.
Well, it, absolutely. That's, that's.
I need my backyard, right?
We're just kids, people that wanna a job.
It's nice to have, see other parts of the area too.
Awesome.
So. All right, um, old business, the two thousand twenty-five budget?
I had, um, held off on bringing the budget thing with me, cause you had mentioned that we might wait till Dave's available. Um, I have the updated figures from Neil from Huffington.
Yeah.
And have gotten the answer to the question as the operating budget plus the well budget and how much is our responsibility. He's really helped me out with that. He's also got some more information regarding the PFAS.
Stuff. So, so I, I, I guess I was thinking we had a meeting before the end of the year, so do we need to schedule something?
As far as the budget goes, you don't need to be done by the end of the year.
Okay, encumbrances, right.
Um, and the police department's not done with their encumbrances.
That's right, so that's more good. So we'll try to do a meeting.
I'm hoping we can have a, a short meeting, maybe, um, the last week of the year, maybe the thirtieth or something like that in the afternoon.
Afternoon, good idea.
And, and I will talk to you a little bit about what we're thinking on my side for encumbrances.
Okay, okay.
So by that time, uh, the police would be ready.
Okay.
With their encumbrances, so.
That's fine.
Uh, but that, Dave's right, that has to be done by the thirty, thirty.
Do you think, you think we could do it? Well, no, that's the week of Christmas. Yeah, you're right.
Christmas afternoon, maybe.
Well, what's, what's being said?
Well, you can, but I'm.
I'm busy that day.
Right, not kidding.
No, well, so like the Monday before New Year's Eve is what we're thinking.
Uh, that's, I, I threw that out just, you know, thinking that maybe next week it's too soon.
Yeah. If something comes up that you think that we could do it, like after the Christmas before New Year's, I mean, at least reach out and we could.
That's why I was thinking of the thirtieth.
Yeah, okay.
And, I mean, we could do it anytime except for New Year's Day. I mean, we needed to do it on a Tuesday or a Thursday.
But thirtieth is Monday.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Um, and I don't think, I don't think you're gonna have too many things on there.
I think I only get two things that we're gonna encumber.
Yeah.
And it's realistic.
Told me he doesn't have anything to encumber from either budget.
Oh.
Which will make it easier.
Yeah.
And, um, as long as we're talking about encumbrances, if you bear with me, maybe I'll just give you my, my speech. What's that?
I had one.
You had one, yeah, I won't let Russell have his.
No, I had the other one for the books.
Oh, the books, yeah, that's fine.
I get to have one, I don't get to have you.
Yeah, you can only have one. That's all I allow. One of the things, we had, Brendan had asked me for, um, encumbrance for, to plan for additional work at the Club Sandmore Cemetery that does not get a lot of attention. And hoping that we'd have some money left over in the cemetery budget, fifteen hundred dollars. That it would be helpful to use that money for maintenance at Club Sandmore.
So she wants to encumber that?
So she would, she's asking if you might consider encumbering that. The other thing that we have in our budget, which, um, you know, there's two sides to this. Um, we've had an insurance, um, a family plan we budgeted for that we have not used. So the health insurance has, um, quite a bit of money left over.
That's a good point.
And so, um, I was, I was going to just get your opinion, um, if you might wanna encumber twenty-eight thousand out of that and reduce our health insurance line by that amount. Now, you know, I always like.
What's the negative on this?
Well, the negative is next year, you're gonna have to, you know, it could, it could turn around.
Right.
And it would help us this year, but just as long as you know that, I mean.
Yeah.
Um, and every year, of course, health insurance costs.
So, is it, do you need a motion?
Um, no, I'll, I'll put this all together for the meeting with Dave.
Okay, then we can all just decide.
We'll have whatever the police come up with that you can consider.
Okay.
And, and then we would need that voted on by the thirty first.
Okay, fair enough.
So.
Cause, yeah. Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
So, uh, that's all we got on the?
On, on that, yeah.
Okay, final.
Would you like to talk about ARPA?
Yeah, yes, we can talk about it. We, another thing that we can talk about, but maybe we'll, along with.
This is not, there's not a time, well, there is a time limit on this, um, as far as the end of the year. ARPA is the money that we received. Um, it's the American, whatever, whatever it is, I never remember what it is, but the.
American saving plan.
Yeah.
Savior plan, I don't know.
Bear with me, I'll find the right.
American?
Thing. I have too many papers.
What's the R stand for?
Oh, maybe I should look in the right folder.
That would help.
Well, that's, yeah, that would be a good idea.
Okay, uh, it's the American Rescue Plan of twenty twenty-one, which is, I know it was right on the tip of your.
Yes, it was, it was coming.
It was, uh, the town received a grand of two hundred four thousand five sixty-three fifty-eight. And we have spent everything with the exception of sixteen thousand six twenty-one.
Okay.
We need, um, at one point I thought we had to spend it all by the end of the year, but we have to, um, market, we have to earmark it for something by the end of the year.
Okay.
Now, currently, we have, some things have already been assigned. That doesn't mean they have to stay that way, but we've still got sixteen hundred forty-three dollars in the record retention program. We've got thirty-seven fifty-seven eighty-four in the town office doors replacement. We've had the doors downstairs done and eventually the doors upstairs will be done. And I think it's gonna be more than thirty-seven hundred dollars. But what is unassigned is eleven thousand two hundred twenty dollars. And that's because a few things changed from your original, um, earmarks. Uh, one thing that did change was the seal code at the public safety building was taken out of impact fees, I think.
Yep.
Um, which was originally gonna come out of this.
It was gonna originally come out of here. Uh, so I guess we need to decide, um, two things, whether you're going to keep the amounts that you've already earmarked and what else to earmark the eleven thousand two twenty-four.
I got a suggestion.
And this, as you know, this building has a lot of expenses coming up. And my suggestion would be something to do with the maintenance of the building.
Oh, oh, fine.
And repair. And what were you trying to spend my money on?
Well, I'll get rid of my suggestion, cause we could do that.
No, what's your suggestion?
Well, I was gonna say, we're gonna do the ambulance. We just put it right in the ambulance and it's gone, done.
Wait, do they say that again?
Well, the ambulance is how much? When, when is that happening?
It's supposed to happen next year.
Okay, but I would need paperwork from them?
From Emmett to get like a purchase order from.
You know, I think I would, I think I'm gonna need something. Okay, so that's one suggestion, that it would be up to the board.
Or can we do the kitchen replacement with this?
It's up to the board what they'd like to do.
I think, I think we kinda talked about the.
I was just throwing out some things that I was thinking of.
Well, I know that there's things that need to be done around here and that's what, that's kinda what I was thinking towards, you know, in this building.
Certainly is one of them.
Well, I was gonna say, the kitchen is certainly used.
Yeah.
And I think it would be nice to.
We are gonna have the building painted next spring by the, um, uh, New Hampshire Corrections and, and his team.
Yeah.
That will be from there. Um, the cupola is going to need some, some work, some serious work.
It's gonna be easier to work on if you don't do it right off, because it'll be down.
You know, um, we're still trying to figure out this back steps and, and door.
I feel like that's what I feel like. I feel like that the extra money that's, or whatever, the money unspent.
I think if you, if you'd like to wait for Dave, I mean, there's another thing we would put on for that meeting that we're talking about encumbrances.
Uh, we could, I don't know that he would, he, maybe he'd have a better idea, but I, I think, I feel like it's money that is taxpayers' money, right, uh, throughout, throughout the United States. This is just the way my brain works.
You are correct.
And, and this, this, this town hall, which we're very fortunate to have, needs some love and we're trying to give it to, out of the budget, but it feels really appropriate for the remainder money, in my mind, to come here. That's the way I feel.
Well, this is the place people see and it's used a lot.
I think all these suggestions are good ones.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
I'll tell you, I went to the craft.
Too bad it's not a million dollars.
This place was packed.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
And eleven thousand is not even a ton of money.
Money really in the grand scheme of things.
I feel like, I feel like, I feel like I could make.
I don't wanna have to pay it back to the government.
No, no.
Yeah.
So I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I, like I said, I'm not talking for Dave, but I don't really have a problem in uh, allocating the money for the re, rest of the, some of the repairs we wanna do here, kitchen or.
Oh, I agree, this is.
Kitchen or.
Well, I was like, Dave needed an invoice. We already have a quote for that.
Yes.
For what, the kitchen we've done?
For the kitchen.
Yeah.
Oh, we do have a quote?
Yeah, we have one.
Who's gonna do that?
Well, it was done by the fax and it's just recently updated, but it's over ten thousand, so.
We'd have to go out for.
We'd have to go out and get two.
Do you think that would be, well, whichever, or, I mean, like, you've got the, the doors are, well, no, that's already in here.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're gonna need more money for the doors, frankly.
Yeah.
Because this, this is an old.
So what do we, we need, what do we need to do to tell you, or what do you, what will you need to be able to take the remainder eleven thousand and spend it?
I guess I was looking for what your suggestion would be and then I would just draw up a motion for you to put forward and then I have the paperwork that I have to send to the government.
Yeah, I, well, I would, I would make a motion to spend the remainder eleven thousand dollars amongst the town hall repairs.
Second, that's right, yeah. I agree. This place gets used well.
Okay, and it, well, not that, not that safety doesn't too, that's not what I'm saying, but it just, you know, we have other projects that need to be finished here, so.
That'll fix the sink and get a handicap ramp too.
The, um, um, the gentleman from the corrections department, he mentioned they also could work in our ramp. Our ramp is gonna need some.
Oh, good.
That's wonderful.
You know, so it's really, that's really a wonderful service. So, and I wanna thank Steve for that, because he kinda got us connected.
That's great.
I remember that years ago, we had them doing something here.
What good mind.
Really, a long years ago, and I can't remember what it was, but at the time.
Okay, so we'll, we'll earmark it for the building and, and I'm gonna have to fine tune it for the government, but.
We know you can handle it.
That's right. That's why you get those big bucks.
One thing I didn't mention under the budget, one thing that's always been a puzzle to me is the, the way that the Old Home Day money is run. And we, the, the voters vote every year thirty-five hundred for Old Home Day. And Old Home Day has a separate checking account, which is the town, under the town's umbrella. And over the years, not all the money's been used, so there's more money in the checking account. So I was going to suggest that this year, that we take and subtract the balance in the checking account, which right now is eighteen hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, and change the budget accordingly, lower the budget by. It's not gonna make really any difference in your tax rate, but if you're voting thirty-five hundred, to me, at the end of the year, the money is supposed to revert to the general fund and we haven't been doing it properly. So that would be one way, one way to do it. And, and maybe, you know, maybe we should talk to the Old Home Day committee and say, cause they worked very hard on that and like everything else, everything's more expensive.
Hmm, yeah. Well, yeah, I would like to get their opinion on what.
So, um, and you have some time to make the, make that decision as well, so maybe I need to have Heidi and, and Terry come in to talk to you about, about that.
Okay, fair enough.
Blue sense.
But I think that if they have that extra money, I think it is a good idea to put it in the account for next year, cause I ran it.
And that's what, and that's what you're saying, though, is covering that money, correct?
You wouldn't have to, it's, it's.
Just in the general, it's in the general.
It's, it's, we have it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
But it goes.
It's considered it's in the general fund at the time, yeah.
But it would be their money still to utilize.
I, I guess I'm just gonna say, yes, it would be, it would be their money to, to spend. It's been somewhat, um, unclear to me how that really works. I'm used to a little more formality, but, uh, whether we, maybe we don't need that, but they've always been the one to decide. And they've had the same things ever since up in here, what they need to buy and what they, what they need to do, um.
But you're kinda would be hoping that they're kinda looking at the future a little bit and making sure that thirty-five hundred is gonna cover it.
That's, that's excellent point. We've done thirty-five hundred for a long, long time.
I remember when I was on, ran the Old Home Day committee, first time we ran fireworks in this town. It was really neat. It was real.
Yeah, well, I know that we've all donated towards them too.
Well, yeah, we used to get money from businesses and so forth.
Yeah. All right, so that's just something you're gonna check with them on and find out.
I will have them come in, talk to you, I think.
Okay.
I get a good idea.
All right. Um, then that means we're moving on to abatements?
Yes, um. Yes, um, these are yours.
Okay, so that one is values that weren't taken off of the campground. So JMJ Properties sold campers. The assessors were supposed to put the values at zero. They never made it to zero before the bill went out, so it needs to be amended, and then I have to let the assessors know to zero it out.
And then we received another one. You wanna explain that one?
I received a phone call from, uh, Tom Levine, who said. He sold his camper in June and is no longer there, and received a tax bill, but the way we tax in New Hampshire is it says assessed as it is on April first, so his camper was there on April first, and it was there on April first, so he's billed for the entire year. This is the second half of the bill, but it's only six dollars, but ultimately, it's not up to me or Dana. It's up to the select board to decide whether a bill is abated. I prepared it if he decided if he wanted to abate the six bucks, or we can hold them to the six dollars.
Gonna be a hard decision.
Six dollars, can you make it?
Do you sign first?
There you go.
Then I have, um, I received a, a call from an owner on Close Pin Road, who the town purchased a right-of-way and a permanent easement. You might know another owner that did that.
Yeah, I do.
This owner that I spoke with asked about getting a tax abatement for that area. So I sent it over to the assessors and said, what do you think? And they, they suggested that we give them a five percent reduction in land value. So if you would like to do that, the five percent reduction amounts to sixty-two dollars.
Yep.
Yeah. Can I sign that, because I'm a neighbor?
Um, you can sign this, but I might ask one, if, now that this one's done, I might do all the others.
Oh.
To be fair.
Right.
And, um, you won't be able to sign yours.
I can't? My god, man.
That's just a backup.
Oops, sorry.
Well, that's, okay.
Just smack me around a little bit.
Can you see that on public?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, correspondence?
Yes, um, every year.
The next folder?
This is folder number six.
Yep.
Every year, the Department of Revenue Administration does the equalization study. Equalization, which is the comparison between properties that have changed hands, and that are what they call an allowable sale. Um, and sales, not all sales are allowable, if you have a sale that's between family members or as a result of a foreclosure or some financial.
That's not utilized in their percentage?
You have to, you can't use that one.
Oh, I don't know, that's interesting.
The ones that have been deemed to be, um, used, and the assessors do this, um, they send them into the DRA, and there's a little, uh, calculation that they do. And when, if you wanted to take a look at that, you can let me know what it says, 'cause I always have trouble every year figuring out. Um, but basically, it tells what the ratio of assessment is per town. We're supposed to be within ten points of a hundred percent either over or under. Last year, we were at ninety-seven point three. This year, we're at eighty-five point three, which is because of sale prices.
Yeah, because the sales price had gone up so high.
But, but what he's saying is what the state feels the evaluated sale price is. We are ten percent below that.
They feel we're assessing.
Too low.
Too low.
I just see that's, that's important to.
You have to remember that, you know, it, it all depends on the proportionability. Um, so even though you have a yardstick that's two and a half feet, as long as you measure everyone by the same one, you have proportionability.
Yeah.
Um, and I didn't come up with that analogy, but that's a great, that's, I always remembered that.
But the way, the way the whole thing is going with property values, it's.
Well, right, so, so.
Reason why the state started every five years to re-evaluate, and you can see how long that it held.
Yeah, yeah. So more or less, state law requires every town to reevaluate every five years.
Yeah.
Then they, so us as a board or the town.
Yeah.
Could say what they want, but we are required to reevaluate, which we just did this year, of course, as everybody knows, 'cause their evaluations had gone up. But we are, according to the state, ten, about ten percent lower than they'd like to say.
Well, yeah, we're at eighty-five, so we're actually down fifteen. They give you a range of ten either way, but, so that's not as terrible as it could be.
No, and, and, but it also shows, I don't know, everything's an average, we consider it.
What are these other towns, you know, I mean, like, City of Concord has somebody there all the time, you know, doing this whole thing, and we don't.
They're dealing with the same thing, because they don't do the whole city in one, you know, every year.
Yeah, right, they can't. So the way the inflated ra, ratio of houses now is crazy. So, but it's the old thing we learned in school, supply and demand. No supply, big demand for everything, so prices just keep going up.
The house across the street from me, they rent, and they just had someone move out, and they want twenty-seven hundred dollars a month.
Oh, wow.
Now, I don't know about you, I couldn't afford that.
It's a house payment.
Is it just a basic three-bedroom, like?
Yeah, it's a three-bedroom. It's a very nice little house. It's a three-bedroom Kate, but twenty-seven hundred dollars a month, and does not include anything.
No, probably get it.
You know, so.
But, but that's, that's good. Right, but good to know, I mean, in a way, you're kinda glad that we're not, according to the state, not overestating, estimating our property in this town. We're on more on the low side. I, I would rather see that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
And that's what the state keeps an eye on to make sure that we're fair to all.
Right.
So if you would be kind enough to sign, um, I'm sorry, I don't know if I should have written, um.
Need one for Dave, me and.
Yeah, or two of you can sign here. Just sign those lines if you want.
Just sign these lines.
Yeah, be on top.
There you go, man.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
There you go.
Just look at the folds these guys.
I know.
Thought you were getting out early, didn't you?
Yeah, right, I know.
Yeah, I'm usually the one that folds it up. Um, I am, I am through.
All of your correspondence?
I think I'm through all of my correspondence.
All right, anybody got public comment?
No, but when you come to your, uh, motions and approvals, they need to be there.
Okay.
I, I may not have a question, but I, I do have a question, but it's not a comment.
Go ahead, put it out.
This is a, a, a public building, and it's, I, I don't know, but I'm pretty sure it's a designated, uh, emergency evacuation housing for people in town, or if there's an emergency somewhere.
I know what you mean.
Yeah.
I know the elementary school is the reason they have a.
We have an agreement with the elementary school.
That's why they have a generator over there.
To use over there. Um, and worst-case scenario, I'm sure we could use this.
Right, absolutely, but.
Well, just back to where I was, you know, I, I can't understand why, and there's money out there through, uh, Homeland Security, why this place doesn't have a larger men's and ladies' room with showers.
Might be able to apply for that, but that's a good question. I, I don't know how they ever decided that the elementary school, maybe because of the.
I would have to do a little research on that.
Kitchen, generator.
They have a generator, yeah.
In the construction of the building.
Yeah.
Do they have showers there?
No, oh, they do?
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to do it with little guys.
I didn't know that either.
I don't know either. I haven't been in the school in a long time, so.
I know that, and this is what I've heard from other towns, Boswell, uh, Andover, uh, different towns, about the same size we are, that there is money through Homeland Security for things like that. You know, they will, they will pour a cement pad and put a Connex on it, so that you can store, uh, blankets and pillows and bunks, or, you know, folding cots, stuff like that. They've done that in other towns. And, you know, I, I don't know if Rob, I know Rob is part of that, and I don't know if he's got his finger on what's going on. He probably does.
Rob Lewinsky?
Yeah.
But I, now, wouldn't we have to go through the school board to do this?
No, 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 they're talking, no, they already are using the school.
So we're talking about it in here.
We're talking on here.
All right.
Yeah, I, I know that used to be, one time, belonged to the town of Webster, but now it belongs to the, the school.
I know.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's fine. It's their building. If they ever decide they wanna get rid of it, I know that there's a, a long line of people who would like to buy it.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
The town did negotiate with Mayor Matt Bailey's school district for the use of that building, and the school board was involved in that at the time.
Gee, was I on the school board that?
I don't think you were.
Right now, I was on for thirty years, so.
Well, the minute you left.
That's right. I was a choose-stick.
A few years ago, that, 'cause I was here when they signed that.
Oh, okay. So Dana, is that something you can look into, to see if there is any money available, if?
We always can do that. We do need help with some officials, um, to do it, but we can certainly look into it.
I think Rob is one of the persons that is a go-to person.
And I think he'd be knowledgeable about that.
Yeah, he would, I think he would.
Through, through the hooks and fire.
I can talk to him about that. I may see.
It just wouldn't take much. I mean, even the setup in this place, with even the size of the, the actual bathrooms, I, you know, a lot of times you don't have.
The footprint of this building, uh, there's, I, I'm thinking about it. I do plumbing on the side, and there's no place to put a bathroom in here large enough to have multiple showers and a toilet and sink. You know, there's just the footprint, everything that's here being used. You know, when they put this building in, they didn't, they took every nook and cranny they could find and turned it into a usable space.
Plus, we don't have much land. If we needed to put a bigger septic system.
That way, you're gonna step on somebody's, in that way, in that way, so, you know, the only thing you can do is go up, and, you know, the cupola up there is about to fall down.
We could put a shower up there.
Well, we already have one.
See, I, I think I wanna picture something right off where the bathrooms are now, into that, I mean, space. I mean, granted, it wouldn't be usable space anymore, but bring it from the bathroom to there.
No, well, the bathrooms downstairs.
Yeah.
Are the front of the buildings, and the bathrooms here on the end of the buildings.
Right.
Makes sense, doesn't it?
Like I said.
You have to flush twice, 'cause it's a long way.
Right, should've been, yeah. Anyhow.
But I just.
So that would need a plan, I think.
What, what, I, what I was going through with this, and I'm thinking, yeah, this, and then I go, there's no showers in the town hall. Wow. And this is a, you know, an emergency evac, not evacuation, emergency housing for people in town. And I do remember, now that you brought it up, I do remember when they talked about it through Mayor Matt Bailey, and they, they fell over themselves, saying, yeah, you know, not a problem. You people are in town, use it.
Hmm, yeah, I don't think they.
That's why the generator was installed.
Right. All right, um, anything else? Thank you. Um, yeah, so select board motions and approvals. Um, approval of the draft minutes, um, from twelve-two, NP one and NP two.
The two non-publics are in there.
You wanted me to just guess what MPs took? I'm just kidding.
No, I jumped right in.
No, I know. Now that I think about it, when you're reading my question, it's not public.
We have the Webster Police Department. We don't have the military police.
I, I went through them, and it looked good to me. I.
Okay for me.
You wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept them.
I second that.
Oh, okay.
So signing of documents and motions and payments. So when did Chief come up? Did I skip over him on, on mistake?
Come up now if he would like to, 'cause you're in the signing, you're in the signing.
Oh, the signing mode, yes, come on up.
So here is, here are my items.
Do you have something from me?
I think it's a.
Um, yes, I was gonna do it non-public. Should I do it now?
I don't, I don't see what I should, what needs to.
Would you like to explain what it is?
I don't.
I, if you're gonna do, I can leave. You guys can do.
We're not non-public yet.
It's not a non-public.
All right.
We are going one at a time.
I'll be nosy.
Well, you're here for us.
So, we.
This one too, Dean.
We're playing the background on a new part timer, um, and I spoke to the people about it before. He's got twenty-two and a half years on with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. The academy already said, all he has to do is go for the law update, so it's a two-week school, and.
Wow.
He's good to go, 'cause he's got so much time on it. And I'd like to get him sworn in before the end of the year, so he can get him his uniform, get him ready to go, and, you know, he can get the academy with his, um, within the next three weeks, three, four weeks, he can do it.
So he still has to go in front of the academy?
He's already gone, he's already been approved. All he has to do is go to the two-week outlaw package.
Okay, so it's like a, like a, like an update, in a sense?
They teach him New Hampshire laws, terminal and motor vehicle, that's where he is, 'cause he's still on LA time.
I was gonna say, boy, what a difference between LA and Webster. He's gonna have a downer time.
That would be almost interesting to know the difference.
Yeah, really.
He'll, he'll be good. He's, he's a.
Well, that's great, though. I mean, it's just.
Everything we've found out about him has been way above board. He's been, uh, his last ten years that he was with the sheriff, I mean, he was in major crimes and.
Wow.
Covering mainly homicides and everything, so if we do have one here, he'll be really good.
Hopefully, we don't have all that stuff here.
We don't have any of that stuff.
There's a lot of funnies we could make.
Not a good thing.
No.
Um, so I'd like, whoops.
Thanks, that was a good toss.
Oh, you have a pen now? Well, that's a pencil.
Oh, yeah, that's why I didn't bring it. That's awesome.
That'll be good, 'cause he, uh, he's willing to work up to three days a week for us.
Gee, that's great.
And he doesn't care what shifts he works, days, nights.
Boy, how do you find these people?
They're hard, hard human between, believe me.
Yeah, no, I know.
Do you bring him into the town clerk's office?
Yeah, he has to come into the town clerk's office. And give Mary something to do. I think this is her first one, right?
What's that?
First one she's sworn in.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
Um, she's sworn in a lot of people, but.
Yeah.
You have something else?
No, I was just, uh, you're gonna take the, the sheet with you and bring it with you when he gets sworn in, is that how it works? It's, uh, it's up to you. I'm just trying to get the, I've never sworn a police officer either, so I don't know the procedure. I can give it to Mary, and so she has to.
Mary swears him in.
Okay.
Clerk swears him in.
Yeah, would you like me to?
Why don't I give this to you, and you can.
Okay.
Give it to her, so she'll be ready when we come in, and we'll notify her, 'cause I'll call in tomorrow and find out.
Perfect, okay.
What do you think tomorrow?
Okay. 'Cause Mary and I had a little conversation today about it.
Yeah, she, she needs to be, have that done once in a while, that little conversation.
So the other thing I have is a purchase order for eight weapons.
Eight weapons?
Eight weapons, 'cause you figure we have myself, lieutenant, sergeant, um, two part-timers right now, there's five. We're hiring this other guy that's six, and should something break.
Company extra, right.
We have two for backups, for just in case. So, these are similar, same models that we have now, um, other than they have optics on them, and that's what everybody's, that's what the academy's teaching now, is optics on the guns, so that less chances of missing. Their shooting abilities increase almost fifty percent.
Holy mackerel.
So I've been teaching at the academy through firearms, I've tried for thirty years, and I have noticed the recruits, boy, you get the recruits that come in with optics on their guns, they shoot seventy-five percent better than the others. I mean, it's incredible how fast they learn and how quick they go through it. Um, it's, it's the way they're going. That's the way everybody's going. It's the way of the future.
What's it go, like a laser connected to it?
Nope. It's a, uh, well, in, in a sense, it's got a holographic dot, so when you pull it up, there's a glass circle, and there's a holographic dot in it. So, all you have to do is put the dot on the target, squeeze the trigger. You don't have to line up your sights, you don't have to do anything, you put that dot on whatever the target is, squeeze the trigger, you're ready. Um, so it's really fast, especially low light, at night, um, it, it picks up. And you've got a choice of red or green, green shows better up during the daytime, red shows better at night. They're eight hundred and thirty-six bucks a piece. So, it comes up there, six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. But, um, we will have two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars of cash to turn back in, to put into the general fund for the trades. So, that'll go into the, we'll turn it back into the town. Takes brand-new holsters, holsters a hundred and sixty dollars a piece. I got a friend of mine that works for Safari Land donated holsters.
Oh, wow.
So, that's, that's twelve hundred and seventy-two bucks, so he donated the holsters. They all have lights on the guns. Um, we don't need the lights, because we have lights on our guns now, we'll just take them off and reuse them. Because the total bill was, uh, where is it, where is it, where is it? Seven thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-six cents. So, the total price it's gonna cost us is forty-five hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-four cents, so, we're saving three thousand bucks.
Can we send in a thank you, though? The selectmen, is that, is that a good idea?
You can if you want.
I think it's nice, he's giving us a break.
He's the Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts rep for Safari Land. Anything I need, Jim and I are good friends, I call him, and it's clear, usually, he fights it.
So, it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt the, the selectmen to send a thank you?
Absolutely, sure.
Want to do that?
Of course, if all I need is to know who it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's, he's already got them, he already ordered them for me, because this is gonna take a hundred and twenty days before they can get us the guns. Um, but I need to get it as quickly as I can to him, actually, there's two there, there's only, I need, only need to sign for one.
Okay, so, just so, I'm like, where does this, where does this money come from?
So, that's gonna come out of our, um... Ding, 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 ding. Uh, where is it, right here, thirty?
It's coming out of your budget.
Yes, it comes out of my budget. Is that three-thirty it says, or four-thirty on the end? See the number?
Ooh, three, oh, 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 she, oh, yeah, four-thirty, yeah, I got it, I got it.
Equipment and repairs.
Yeah, yeah.
If for some reason we don't have enough money in that, I'll take it out from our cruiser fund that we put all our cruiser detail money in, we've got eighteen thousand, I think, in that. And I just spent twelve thousand for the cruiser out of that, so we got, we, we still got eighteen thousand on top of it.
Oh, wow.
Sounds excellent.
And I've discussed this with Dave already.
Okay.
And Dave, Dave said it was fine.
Okay. Well, you know, you sit here and you think about it, and you say to yourself, well, first of all, no, I don't want you to have a good gun. And I think-
Nobody wants them, but it's a necessity.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like you work hard to, to everything amongst your budget and your means. So, I don't know who I'm to say, I mean, I'm the type of person to say, no, but I know there's, will be that one time that you're gonna be, oh crap, somebody's out of control, probably Dean.
Yeah, my, you can blame me, I'm the older one in the group. I've been around longer than you, young kids.
Damn kids.
Yeah, really, thank you. There you go, kiddo.
Not quite much.
I've seen the worst in Webster, I've seen the best in Webster. One of these days-
It's been good the last six years that I've been here.
You what?
It's been good the last six years that I've been here.
I'll, I'll, I'll take that, and I'll send it to you.
You don't need, do you need, do you need us to sign both copies?
The bottom one has to be signed, I didn't know.
It is two, so you-
Same one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same.
It's just a copy. It's the same one, okay. All right, I'll, I'll, because I like to keep the copy out.
Yeah, that's-
There's more of Webster.
You what?
So, I said, there's more best in Webster than there is worse of Webster.
In the future, if you could, um-
You've been around a while, you know what I'm talking about.
Do, give us that little in advance, with a little explanation, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Then that way, sometimes we can think about it, swallow it, and then in case I have any questions. But, again, we, we trust what you're giving us, so it's not like it's gonna be questioned, but you see what I'm saying?
I, I probably, the best thing was, like, send it, email it to all you guys, like, in advance.
Yeah, 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 with a little bit of, this is what I'm looking for, this is what it does, and then it gives us a minute to, um, absorb it, and then, yeah, that's okay.
And you guys discuss it amongst each other.
Yeah, well, we, we wouldn't do that, but at least I might, I might have questions sometimes when it comes at you like this, again, not questioning.
Especially where it's not hundred dollars, or two hundred dollars, I mean, six thousand bucks, of course, it's gonna turn out to be four thousand by the end, by when we get the re, the returns.
Which is awesome. I mean, I feel like you're striking at the right time to get them better equipment.
That's, and it's, it's the best time, I think, so.
Awesome, and we thank you for that, that's great.
I know I, I've discussed this with Dave for the past month, that this is what we're looking at, and he says, I, he was all for it, so, um, I knew he was behind it, and I expected him to be here tonight, but-
Well, you're the professionals, so I'm not arguing with the professionals.
Well, exactly, 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 for sure.
So, Steve, if you get me your friend's name and address, I'll-
Yeah.
I'll draw letters for the board to sign.
I'll get you one of his business cards, I have them at my house. Absolutely.
Awesome.
And, uh, that's all I want to swipe from today.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming in, and we appreciate it.
Have a merry Christmas.
Well, I hope you guys do too, and, uh, everybody be careful going home tonight, because-
I had a crazy time, like, this weekend, my kids all showed up, five, the four, the five, and decorated, brought a big tree, and did the whole, whole thing.
Those are nice children.
Somebody threw up in your living room. Christmas came. That's the way it usually works.
Well, my kids are, my kids are really, these are things great for me, I'll tell you.
Well, you have some very artistic-
You've seen them as far as-
Yes, they are.
Yep.
You've seen them as far as, um, signing up on the manifest.
Yes, and then we laugh a lot.
Yep. There was a period of time that-
But it will need a valid motion on-
When they were teenagers, it wasn't so much fun.
My kids are all pretty good, and you're like, hey, come play.
Yeah, they, mine had their moments.
I was pretty lucky, I think.
Yes, Steve's right, that was to you.
We'll hook up and figure out how this is gonna work out.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So, I just kind of read this, right?
So, I, I would read it, you're gonna read the total amount, and then you're going to specify the individual amounts coming from the fund.
So, I go to each one, and that's the first couple?
You don't have to each individual-
No, 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 just the totals.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Merry Christmas, sir.
I'll let you know when they get here.
Yeah. That's awesome.
You're gonna see a big green and white bus-
Oh, good.
With a big roof rack on it, and a ladder on the back, will be parked in the yard here.
Oh, are you having your Santa Claus suit too, with you?
No, I'm not fat enough. No, that's, uh, yeah, you'll know they're here then. You guys have a good Christmas.
Me too.
May Santa bring what you want, and may somebody else get the bill.
Thanks. We are, I'm making a motion to accept the trustee of trust funds, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents, payable to the town of Webster, to reimburse the town for expenses to be withdrawn from capital reserves fund, funds, and expendables trust funds, as listed below. To withdraw eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and zero cents from the Highway and Roads Capital Reserve Fund for the following invoices. To withdraw a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-seven cents from the Roads Preservation Expendable Trust Fund. To withdraw three thousand, three hundred and two dollars and seventy-three cents from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve Fund. To withdraw thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars from the Town, uh, Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund. And to withdraw forty-six thousand dollars from the Police Cruiser Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did I do that right?
You did perfect.
You were just the-
Took me all day to do something right. All right, so-
And then I have these things.
Oh, yeah, we have an intent to cut.
We have an intent, and I have, I have one manifest item, which is kind of an unusual thing, but the electrician asked if he could be paid, and since he did a good job, I said, all right.
All right, I guess.
That's just the backup D to it.
Oh, sorry.